Yuba City Live's Local Government Livestreams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske Truck Rentals. Details at plumaslakeselfstorage.com.
Home that we have in this city for many people. I thank you also that these men and women who are your servants are that govern and care for your people on your behalf. Thank you for their willingness to serve and to care for others with the skills and the experiences you've given them. Father, tonight I ask that you would give them the skill of Nehemiah and his anointing, the ability to recognize true needs, the compassion to care for the welfare of other people, the discernment to fully evaluate each situation, the wisdom to formulate the best situations and the best solutions, the skill to organize people and resources with integrity, and the determination and resiliency to overcome obstacles and lead with boldness until the job is done well. Finally, Father, I ask that you would help them to fulfill the three foundational directives that you've given to us as your people. First, that you would help them to do justly the right thing. Secondly, that you would help them to love mercy and to do the right thing with compassion. And third, I ask that you would help them to walk humbly with their God, to rely on your wisdom and your strength for leadership of this city. I thank you again for these leaders. I pray your mighty blessing upon them and their families as they serve you and this city in the biding name of your son, Jesus. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Joining us remotely is our attorney, Mr. Chaffin. I know we did not have close session tonight, but do we have anything additional we need to report? Under my knowledge...
Mr. Mayor, there is no additional reportable action.
All right, thank you. Then we're going to go straight into ceremonial presentations this evening. And the first one that we have on the agenda is the recognition of Lily Miller, who is right here from Yuba City, and she recently graduated high school. But more than that, she is our very own appointee to the United States Air Force Academy and leaves in just a couple of weeks. So Lily, will you join us right down at the front? All right, yeah, it's on. There we go. You know, it's, we went back looking and we've asked everybody that we, I could find and I've talked to those council members, and you're kind of it that's gone to an Air Force Academy out of our community. And that speaks volumes. That tells you right there just how rare that is. And before I read this certificate that we want to give you, just telling you how proud we are of you, I just want to say thank you for letting me be part of that journey. Part of that journey that goes on for almost two years is you have to have letters of recommendation, you have to have sponsorships, and you have to have someone that's a member of Congress or the Senate that sponsors you, basically that nominates you. And it was great because that was Congressman Doug Lamafa that nominated you, and it was quite the, quite the thing. I think I helped write like three letters, and every time I'm just going, "Go Lily, go Lily, go Lily," you know? And it was neat when that phone call came in and your mom called. So thank you all for letting me be a part of that. So before I read this, actually, I'm just going to open it up to the council. Would you guys like to say a few words tonight on this?
I'm still losing my voice. Lily, congratulations. You know, it's quite an honor in representing our city, and I agree with the mayor. I don't know of anyone else. There may be, but it doesn't matter. You are, and we are so proud of you for your, for representing us back there and all the hard work that you put in. I know that was a lot of self-sacrifice, and I followed you a little bit, know your grandpa some. Anyway, congratulations. Lily, over the years, I've had the chance to watch you and your family and just to watch you grow as from a young lady to a woman. And just the, this is just another one of your achievements. And so, congratulations, well done, and we continue to be amazed. So thank you.
Lily, when I got the notice from your mother, I sent her a note back and I said, "I really, really am in awe of overachievers." I like being around overachievers. My wife's two cousins from Wheatland, two sisters were in the academy probably about 15, 20 years ago, and I know that the gauntlet that you've gone through just to get there, and the best of luck to you, and thank you for wanting to serve us.
Yeah, Lily, congratulations. I looked up the acceptance rate to the Air Force Academy. It's somewhere in the 13% range, and something tells me you were an easy choice for them with your achievements. 4.7 GPA, right? Valedictorian, lettered in three sports, finished your AA before graduating high school. So I just am so impressed and extremely excited to watch your journey unfold. And I also want to say that you're very talented, but I want to give a little testament to your parents, too. Good job, parents.
Well, before I read this, and there's several other people that want to say a few words, do you want to let people know what you're planning on doing and why you joined the Air Force Academy? And I know grandpa over there, he's very proud of you with what you're going to be doing, but would you mind telling them?
So I originally got interested in the Air Force Academy because my grandpa was able to help me get recruited to the rifle team, so I'll be shooting on the rifle team while I'm there at the academy. I'm so grateful to him for all of the effort and work he put in because he has been one of the main deciders on going to the academy. Because once I, once I got on my radar, I started looking up about it, researching unofficial visits, official visits there, their summer program, everything new that I learned about it, I just loved it more and more. So I'm so grateful that I was able to get there, get my appointment. It's been a long struggle getting in, and my mom has been very helpful through the entire process. So I just want to thank my entire family and especially my mom because I know that you have been so vital in this process, and without your diligence and support of me getting into the academy, it wouldn't, I wouldn't be where I am today. So thank you, Mom.
Let's give them a round of applause. Well, Lily, from the city, we want to give you a certificate of commendation. It says, "Lily Miller, U.S. Air Force Academy Appointment. In recognition of your appointment to the United States Air Force Academy, the City of Yuba City congratulates you on this prestigious and coveted honor. Your hard work will help you overcome challenges and strive for excellence, and is presented on behalf of the entire city and the entire city council. And when you graduate in four years, you're going to end up with what they call butterbars. But with the drive that you have, you will change the butterbars into stars, I'm sure, no doubt." So with that, go to the next one here. We reached out because this, your appointment is actually a federal appointment, but reached out to Tasha at Senator Megan Dolly's office, and she wasn't able to be here tonight because there were so many graduations and things going on. But she sent over as well a certificate of recognition from her from the California Senate. With that, I've asked a few other people to be here tonight to possibly say a few words. You're part of the military family now. So we've got the BMLC here. Would Sammy or Rico like to say a word or two? Come on up here. This is good stuff. We don't do back there.
Lily, on behalf of BMLC, the Beal Military Liaison Council, we want to say congratulations. We are very excited for you, being that we do the good for the base. We very much appreciate our youth going into the service and defending our country. So thank you so much, and we look forward to possibly seeing you at the academy one day. So thank you.
And if everyone would turn their attention to the video screen, we got a special message from someone that graduated from there.
Hey, Lily, congratulations on getting accepted to the United States Air Force Academy as a fellow grad from the Air Force Academy, class of 2002, No Limits. Congratulations. Super happy for you. Hope your degree pursuits end up working out well. Hope you do great on the rifle team. I'm sure you'll do really well. And I know you're looking into Special Forces, but just remember, you could always be a fighter pilot. I mean, you might want to fly an F-35, T-38, an F-22, an F-15C, F-22, T-38, right? You might want to fly those. I'm just saying, it is the Air Force. We are in the mission of air power. But no matter what, totally stoked for you, happy for you. Congratulations. Sorry I couldn't be there, but best of luck and Godspeed.
And for those of you who don't know who that is, that is the base commander for Beal and the commander of the Ninth Reconnaissance, Colonel Keegan McLeese. So he's tied up with the air show. That's the reason he sent that. We'd have Mom and Dad come up. We got one more thing, and we want to take a picture with the last thing that we have. All right, we'll go into the next thing. If I could have interim chief Runyon come down. We want to recognize the volunteers. So chief?
So I'll have you guys come up here in a second, but this group of individuals here is our volunteers in policing. Just to give you just a small snippet of what they do, I can't even describe all the duties. There's a lot of duties that, it's not just serving the police department, but our community. And they come in every day, they're there almost every day of the week, and just continue to provide a service for us that we simply couldn't provide, the amount of resources and time that they give us. Vacation checks, there's clerical duties within the building, speed trailers, taking care of some of our patrol cars. I'm missing a lot of the duties, but those are some of the major things that they provide to our community, and we can't thank them enough. So what I would like to do, Sergeant Gwynn is going to call them up and recognize them for their hours of service for the year. If you can come up here and receive it.
All right, first of all, I want to thank the volunteers as well. I just took over the responsibility of being in charge of them, and they're whipping me into shape pretty quickly. But just to give you a heads up on the amount of hours that the volunteers have put in, we're at a total of 3,157 volunteer hours just in the year of between April of last year and April of this year. So that's really commendable to a small group of people who have such impact at the police department. With that being said, I'm going to give out some hourly pins. The first one is going to be Gwen Baker, and these pins are total number of hours that they've provided to the City of Yuba City since they've started with the department. So Gwen's going to be receiving her 750-hour pin.
Thank you.
This one is in my office most of the week, and she's the one that gives me a lot of the slack that I get. But she is leading all of the volunteers with 7,000 hours given to the city. And can I have Carol Boyer come up, please? She didn't want a pin, by the way. I made her put it in the envelope. Next one is Grace Crowhurst, if you could come up. She has given 275 hours to the city. Our Volunteer of the Year, Caroline, can you come up? She has, she received our Volunteer of the Year last year, or for this year, apparently, and she has given 600 hours to the City of Yuba City. Next one is Gary Kim. Gary does a lot of work for me. He helps me out with my range staff and also does a lot of the running around for our vehicles. I really appreciate Gary. He takes a lot, load off me. But he did 2,400 hours so far with the City of Yuba City. Okay, and this one's leading the year, or led the year last year for us. So can I have Cheryl Landris come up? She has provided in her time 2,000 hours with the City of Yuba City. This one has provided 200 hours of the City of Yuba City, and you guys may recognize her And this one, this one you might see around Stabler Lane walking a Doberman Pinscher most of the time. And he comes around our office, he does a lot of our recycling for us, and he's kind of a man of all trades. But Richard Teniken, can you come up here? Richard has provided over his years of service 6,500 hours. And I have a certificate for another volunteer to recognize for the hours that they provided. And Larry, you have, in your short period of time here, have provided 83 and a half hours of service to the city. We appreciate that. Carolyn, would you like to come up and present the check?
Hi. On behalf of Yuba City Police Department and all the volunteers, we are presenting this check to the City of Yuba City in the amount of $63,140 for all the hours that the volunteers have put in.
Thank you.
The only question I have is which bank will cash one this big? The Bank of Dave. If we can have all the volunteers come over here in the middle, and then we'll be the council flanking on the sides, and we'll have the check. Let's get a picture there. So come on in the middle. All the way in. My wife does not follow directions. Well, behind the check, honey.
Yeah, we're worth $20 more.
You guys are worth a lot more. All right, can you get us all in there, Kristy? All right, do not go anywhere yet. Before we go, I would like, yeah, if you guys could give them a standing ovation for the hours they do, because these men and women do not have to do what they do, and they go in on their own free time. And we could not do this without you, so... And I'd like to do our traditional if the council's up for it. If we can have all LE down here with the VIPs, and the council's going to step to the back, and you guys can hold the check here. Okay? Wait a minute, I almost forgot one thing. Yeah, I still got one more thing, so please stay. VIPs, stay. They got to keep me going straight. There we go, it's back here. We're going to take this and deposit this appropriately here at the Bank of Sierra. There we go, and I need my glasses or I can't read squat. I know, it's what happens when you get in that middle seat. So Mike, if you want to join me over here in the middle with your team?
We also wanted to recognize, you know, the service that you guys do as volunteers. Again, we cannot do this without you. So the proclamation in summary says, "Whereas Yuba City Police Department Volunteers and Policing Program was founded in 1996 to provide an opportunity for members of the community to partner with the police department by assuming numerous duties performed, previously performed by full-time staff. The volunteers provide essential services such as neighborhood patrols, vacation checks, traffic control assistance, administrative support, community outreach, and crime prevention education. From April 1 of last year to March 31 of this year, as you saw, they provided a total of 3,157 hours, the equivalent is over $63,000 in paid wages that saved the city. Their dedication, exemplary service, and unwavering commitment to the police department embodies a generous spirit of serving our community. The well-being of our citizens is strengthened by the active involvement and dedication of individuals who gave their time and talents for the benefit of all. So therefore, now be it resolved that I, Dave Shaw, the mayor of the City of Yuba City, on behalf of the entire city council and the citizens we serve, do hereby recognize and honor the numerous hours of dedicated service to the Yuba City, of the dedicated service of the Yuba City Police Volunteers have contributed to our community." Mike, if you can hang that in the VIP rooms, and that way they can be reminded how much we cherish everything that you, you men and women do. So thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you again. Thank you. I'll talk to you at home. Thank you, guys. All right, and actually, we're now done. So... Oh. Okay. Thank you. All right, these are all the fun things we get to do. The next one is kind of bittersweet, but Mr. Ben Moody, would you join us here at
We were joking around a little bit before we came in here tonight, and I knew that he was going to have several of his team members in here. So are you sure I don't need to just open this up? Somebody's got to have some good stories after all these years.
Drinks later.
For drinks later, okay. Ben, I just want to say, on behalf of myself, and then we'll, we've charted this thing with the council, someone open it up to them as well. But it is bittersweet. You and I talked a few weeks ago. This is an advancement for your career, and it's a step forward for you. And I know that you're going to do a great job, but I want to take time and look back to all the years that you've done here and all the good things that you've done here. And I tell you, there's going to be a void that is felt, and we will definitely miss you. And when you're done up there, you can always look at coming home. Okay? So...
I was so excited to work with you, and then now you're leaving us. But I think it's a testament to the fact that ambitious people move on and they do other things, so says a lot about your character and grit and work ethic. And again, like, I will echo what Dave said, we'll definitely feel you gone, and sad to see you go, but really excited you're staying close. Congratulations.
Ben and I go back quite a ways, those two children sitting alongside of their mother. I was given the opportunity to be part of their lives, my wife and I. I remember one time, Ben, when they were both going to our school, and we were building a house for Ben, he said the remark, "You know what? I'm getting tired of sending all my checks to the Pasquales." Ben, I cherish our friendship more than anything, Ben, and you've done a great job, and congratulations, you're moving up, great, most success you can possibly have, sir. It's been a pleasure. I told myself I wasn't going to cry. You know, when you first get this job, one of the things that you have the opportunity to do is to meet the department heads. And I remember the day that I met Ben in his office, and I knew we were going to hit it off because of his personality, his people skills, just the ability that he has on other people, the effect that he has on other people. And I've, over the years, I've tried to tap into some of that knowledge as much as I can, whenever I can. I'm going to miss our trips down to Sacramento where I'm asking questions all the way there and all the way back, and thank you for being patient with me. But this is one of those events where, when the announcement hit, my phone certainly was ringing. And that was kind of a testament to the impact that you've had on other people in our community in a positive way, by the way. And Ben, I wish you all the success in the world.
Well, Ben, as these department heads leave, these are part of the time when I worked with you, and I remember, you know, coming when you came to the city and watch your meteoric rise. And I can say with very good confidence that your impact on this city, the projects you've done, the people you've mentored, the team that you've built, you know, those things are somewhat immeasurable. But those of us who know a little bit about that on the backside know how important that is to not only the folk that work with you, but the city and the residents that we all serve. You're going and stepping up in advancement. You and I've had a chat about that. I wish you the very best. If there's anything that we need from you, I have a feeling that you'd be there for us, and that's also very comforting to me because you mean a lot to me and you mean a lot to this city. Thank you.
And add to that, we know where you live. So, Ben, would you like to bring your family up before we start the presentations? There was more here than I thought. We like to do this and include the family because, you know, it's, you went into a life of servitude working for a municipality, and it does take its toll on the family. So thank you all for being here tonight, so as we can honor Ben. I want to sum up... I wanna summarize the proclamation because if I read it all, we'd be here till nine o'clock. So, I'm gonna summarize it real quick. Whereas, Ben Moody entered municipal service nearly 19 years ago, dedicating his professional talent, steady leadership, and vision for the community to the Public Works and Development Service Departments. Mr. Moody guided the Department of 113 employees, that's nearly half the entire city workforce, instilling a culture of leadership, innovation, and quality service that will endure long after, uh, your service concludes. His many successful, successful projects include the Bridge Street Widening and Reconstruction Project, transforming a critical corridor into a safer multilane thoroughfare; the completion of a major water system extension that increased resiliency, brought high-quality, uh, potable water to new residents; multiple growth annexations ensuring that new neighborhoods entered the city with modern infrastructure; sustainable funding mechanisms, and seamless integration into existing public services; the harder road development, converting the once-rural roadway into a strategic artery that now anchors commercial investment, single-family homes, and a public park. Ben Moody's collaborative spirit fostered enduring partnerships with regional agencies, contractors, and community stakeholders, earning the confidence of City Council's past and definitely this present one, as well as the heartfelt appreciation of the citizens that you've served. So now therefore be it resolved that I, Dave Shaw, Mayor of the City of Yuba City, on behalf of the entire City Council, do hereby commend Ben Moody's outstanding and loyal service and urge all residents of the City of Yuba City to join me in recognizing Ben Moody for all of his contributions to the Yuba City community over the past 19 years. His unique perspective and dedication to the betterment of the city has earned Ben the respect and admiration of residents and coworkers alike. Join me in giving him a round of applause. There you go. Would you like to say a few words?
Sure, sure. Um, you know, thank you, thank you, everybody. Yeah, I very, very much appreciate everybody's time and coming out. Um, it's an honor. Um, it truly has been, it's been a good run. It really has. I'm, I'm gonna miss the people the most. Yuba City's been, um, a fantastic place to work and raise a family. It's been rewarding professionally and personally, just with challenging work and working with amazing staff that, um, I'm really gonna miss, but I'm, I'm definitely planning to cross paths in the future as, um, as rules change. And so, um, thank you again. It's been an honor to work for the city, um, with the council, with past directors and supervisors to really make Yuba City a better place. Thank you.
And at this time, I'd like to ask Sandy Drouin to come up from the Downtown Business Association. And, uh, Natalie, are you gonna be joining her? Okay.
Yeah, we've got two, we've got three board members here tonight. All right, Ben, oh, this one's a hard one. All right, so the Yuba City Downtown Business Association would write, in recognition, uh, would like to present Ben Moody in grateful appreciation for your exceptional leadership and dedication as a Public Works Director, which has been instrumental in the success of our downtown events and is in significant improvements in our district. Your vision, your hard work, your commitment to our community has made a lasting impact. We wish you continued success as you embark on your new journey. In my vote, thank you for all you've done for us.
Oh, thank you. All right. Christie, did you get the picture you needed of all of us at this point? Okay?
Probably, I wouldn't mind having the guys come.
Well, we're gonna do that in a second. You want the guys or you don't have the family with you guys? All right, the council will go to the back, and if we can have everyone that's on Ben's team come down and join him and the family, that'd be great. So, come on down. You'll have our undivided attention. We'll give them just a minute and then we'll move on. All right. All right. Let's move on to item four, which is Appearance of Interested Citizens. You are welcome and encouraged to participate in this meeting. Public comment is taken on action items appearing on the consent calendar or business items on the agenda when they are called. Public comment on any other items within the scope of the city's jurisdiction, including items not listed on the agenda, will be considered at this time. Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker. Members of the public submitting written requests at least 24 hours prior to tonight's meeting will be allotted five minutes to, uh, comment per speaker. Repetitive comments may be limited, and large groups are encouraged to select representatives to express the opinions of the group. Do we have any comments from the public this evening? Do we have any comments from the public this evening? All right, hearing none, we'll move on to the consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered routine and can be enacted in one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time that the council call, uh, votes on the motion, unless members of the council, uh, request specific items be discussed or removed from the consent calendar for individual action. Do we have any public comment on consent calendar items five through seven? Any public comment on consent calendar items five through seven? Hearing none, we'll bring it back to the council for comments or action.
To the mayor?
Yes, sir.
Uh, move to approve consent calendar items five, six, and seven?
Yeah, have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Yeah, have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, motion carries. Gonna move to business items next. Uh, item number eight, Utilities Instrumentation Services Agreement. Ms. Harris? You have our undivided attention, as we said.
There you go. Hello, good evening, Mayor and members of council. Um, I know you see my name a lot more than see my face, but here I am. Uh, we're just gonna talk about a simple, uh, professional services agreement we, uh, would, are recommending to amend. This is for our, um, utilities instrumentation, which is the brain and the nervous system of the water and wastewater treatment, um, process. You usually hear it as SCADA, the Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition System. Uh, this helps staff to, uh, monitor the process all along the way and gather data to react in real time. And there are two types of work that support staff. You can have your on-call repairs and assistance and recurring upgrades. The most recent system upgrades, uh, we're initiated for the wastewater side as part of the Wastewater Treatment Facility Improvements Project, uh, which was started in 2017, and most of it was concluded in about 2021. But one of the remaining items is the modernization of the SCADA system. Our current, uh, consultant that we utilize is TM Process Controls of Elk Grove to support our, um, electrical and instrumentation team. We have one instrumentation, uh, tack as well as the electrical team. So, since we use them frequently, we had $200,000 awarded to them, uh, in our recommendation as part of the fiscal year 2425 Annual Citywide Purchasing Item, the bulk item that happens in June before each fiscal year. So, as for lots of things, the volume of work and the associated costs, um, often exceed what we originally estimated, not for the budgets, but for this particular vendor and their work. So, um, and one of the best part, one of the ideal parts of this really is that this has allowed us to capitalize on the remaining bond funds that come out of that wastewater treatment facility improvements project. Those are limited to use to very particular projects and items, and the modernization of SCADA is one of the remaining items, so we can use up some of those funds we did not need in the bulk of the project. So, this is really just to amend the agreement that we have for that $200,000 that was originally awarded. We would like to add a little funding to that so that we can continue those ongoing projects and in case of any, um, emergencies that happen between now and the end of the fiscal year. So, we're looking at, our estimate would be $75,000 amendment for a $275,000 fiscal year total. There are sufficient funds in the, that CIP project, especially that one, and in our water and wastewater operating budgets, so there's no budgetary change, no supplemental appropriation required at this time. It's just to award to this particular vendor. So, with that, a nice, easy recommendation, um, that we have brought forth is to adopt a resolution authorizing amendment of the Professional Services Agreement with TM Process Controls Incorporated of Elk Grove, California, for additional instrumentation and related services for utilities treatment facilities in the additional amount of $75,000 for a total fiscal year award of $275,000 with the finding that it is in the best interest of the city.
Thank you. Is there any questions from the council? All right, we will open it up to public comments. Are there any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? And I will bring it back to the council for action or further discussion.
To the mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to move that we approve staff's recommendation for item eight.
All right, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a second by, uh, Councilmember Briscuali. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, motion carries. Thank you, ma'am. We'll move on now to the Fleet Maintenance Budget Adjustments, and, uh, this will be presented by, uh, Ben Moody.
Right. Well, a little bittersweet, for sure. Uh, maybe, maybe the last one for a while. So, um, and this is a real, um, riveting item here before you too that I'm gonna get into. Um, and so, good evening, Mayor Shaw, members of the City Council. The item before you is in regards to the Fleet Maintenance Budget. And so, um, it's really, um, some house clean, cleaning up here at the end of the fiscal year and, and working through, um, rising costs. And so, um, I'll walk through it a little bit. And so, um, as many of you know, the Fleet Division, um, there's five full-time equivalents. Um, this last fiscal year was actually where we, um, we've had an ongoing vacancy for the fourth, and then the, the fiscal year budget, we added a new position. And so, we actually just became fully staffed as of Monday. And so, um, which I, I'll go into a little bit, which I, uh, which I hope, um, strategically is what we're working on to, to lower costs in the future. And so, um, the Fleet Maintenance, um, big picture, 1.16 million is their annual operating, um, budget. It's an internal service fund, and so every department, um, division pays a little bit into it. There's about 370-ish, um, pieces of equipment that's in I-Works that, um, this team is responsible from, from, um, police, fire, lawn mowers, trucks, generators, trailers, um, you name it, they're doing the annual maintenance on it. And so, and what I'm gonna get to a little bit is that we're getting towards the fiscal year, and based on raising costs and, um, and, um, where we're at at the end of the year with special service needs is basically we're appropriate, we're asking for, um, um, more money, about 150,000, and then, um, so the authority for that and then how it's allocated for accounting reasons to those different divisions. And so, um, basically, it's to provide necessary additional funding to sustain essential, essential, essential internal services provided by Fleet Maintenance. Um, you know, it really comes into, you got a fire truck that breaks down, we need to get it repaired. And, and do we have the staff available to do it in-house? Or we need to send it out for, have special pumps, special air quality with the diesels, some of that technical, um, and so, any sort of bodywork, any sort of special transmission or engine work that we can't handle, have to order, it has to go out. And, and those costs just, um, you know, um, as everybody with inflation, there, there's been a huge spike. Um, and then it's kind of leveling off a, a little bit this last year, but at the same time with, it's been really hard to find mechanics the last couple of years. And so, we've been struggling, um, with, with being able to keep some of those services in, in, in shop. And so, what City Council did this last year was the, um, they changed the classification. So, instead of having a journey-level mechanic, we, we let it, so we could have an entry-level mechanic and then build them up to journey level. We did a few things where we gave some tool stipends, um, through negotiations with the bargaining group, and that has seemed to help. And so, those longstanding vacancies, we've, we've just recently filled them, which is great, and we're hoping to continue to build that team up now so we could kind of maintain those costs so they don't keep going up every year. So, um, the way the accounting works for this is, instead of just a new, if, when you run out of money, I'm being a little blunt here, um, you could either just, a new, a, a police vehicle gets, gets wrecked, you could just, um, charge it to the, to the, uh, police department. Or a fire truck comes in, you could charge it to the fire truck. Um, but really, to be consistent with how the city does the accounting, it gets divvied up, um, the pro-rata share gets divvied up from last year's costs. And so, there's a percentage, um, that every one of these divisions from, um, PD, fire, parks, public works, they get this, this share based on costs of last year. And so, to be consistent with that, not to mess up with the accounting and to track it for next year, we're basically requesting authorization to, uh, take, for the need for the $150,000, and then they divvy it up into those divisions. Um, ideally, there's existing funds in those divisions that have been allocated this year, so they're using budgeted funds from this year. Until we do the closeout of each department and division, we're not gonna know exactly, but, um, we're, we're hoping that that's absorbed. And so, with that, I'd be happy to go into details, but it specifically puts $110,000 into account number 6605, 63512 Vehicle Outside Repairs, and then Specialty Equipment Outside Repairs. With that, um, I have a recommendation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the council? All right, hearing none. Any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Hearing none, I will bring it back to the council for action.
Through the mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to take action on item number nine, Fleet Maintenance Budget Adjustments as given.
All right, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. The eyes have it, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Moody. All right, uh, item 10, Future Agenda Items. Is there any agenda item that has come up tonight that the member of the council would like to come back in a future meeting? All right. Then moving on to reports, uh, we'll start with our city manager. Mr. Bendorf, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor Shaw, uh, council members. I only really had one thing tonight, and that was some follow-up that your council had asked me to do with the relationship to the Adventist, uh, Ad Hoc Committee. And, uh, the asset had come back on the third. As I've talked about, the mayor and the vice mayor, we're just in the middle of finishing up budget, so I, just a little dispensation. Think we know where we wanna go, but if we can push that off until, uh, the first meeting in July, that would be very helpful.
All right, thank you very much. Um, let's come to, uh, council reports. Let's change it up a little bit. Councilmember Kirchner.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Um, before I begin, I would like to acknowledge, uh, this was in the paper the other day, front page, um, the efforts, uh, that the county and, uh, different players have, and, uh, have, have, uh, made, um, in cleaning up, uh, the area of our river bottoms, uh, between the boat ramp and Shanghai, even past Shanghai to south. And, and it's, we're privy to some of these pictures that are, um, being circulated, but the, the amount of material that's being taken out of there and, and people are able to use, um, our river again is, is amazing. Um, and this was on the front page of the paper, uh, just the effort that the, uh, again, like, the county has done with this. Well done, well done. If, if you, if you haven't used those waterways or you, you're not, uh, you're not walking your dog or you live out there, you're probably not aware of, of how bad it was, but it's, it's, it's certainly, uh, a vast improvement from where, where it was to where it is now. Um, we, uh, we had a, a special transit meeting that was called. Uh, there was one item that we needed to take another look at, and the, uh- item that we needed to take another look at, and the, uh, the recommendation was authorize executive director to execute a cooperative agreement with the city of Live Oak to, uh, to go for a sustainable communities, uh, grant, which was approved by the board. Uh, in addition to that, um, there was a, uh, ribbon cutting of sorts, sorts out of Yuba College for transit. Uh, we expanded, uh, service out towards the, uh, the, um, Oliverst and Linda areas, and we were able to see our new, um, our new, uh, transit vehicles out there as well. And then lastly, I took, uh, took port in, uh, the ribbon cutting of, uh, the lights out on Center Street, which is a, a portion of the amendments, uh, that are, um, in, uh, utilized along Pluma Street. Um, it looks really nice, and if you haven't seen Center Street lit up lately, uh, you need to go out there. And that concludes my reports.
Thank you, sir. Again, we're going to change it up. Councilmember Briscwally, you want to go second?
Thank you, Mayor.
Uh, two committees, Arts Council, they're, uh, having a, um, next month, uh, I forget the date, uh, they're having their, uh, open to the public to come and participate and see, to go through the, uh, budget and, and such, and open it up to the public. So I really, really recommend anybody that is interested to go, go stop in. Uh, also had my, uh, air quality control board meeting yesterday, and not a whole lot to report there, uh, than losing monies for grants and the such because of the May revise for the budget. And I just wanted to take, uh, uh, Robert, please pass on my gratitude for the efforts of code enforcement and getting rid of the blight of the pop-up restaurants they are doing. I, I was, I almost started jumping up and down because I, I am, uh, subject to, uh, three of them in my, within a mile of my home, and it's just, it just irks me to know and to go through and, and to see what's going on and the, the toll they're taking on the, the built restaurants and the such in the community. So thank you. Please pass that on from Councilmember Briscwally, because it is a very, very big presence in my, uh, district. So thank you. And with that concluding my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Cole.
It's nice not to go first because they remind me of all the things I need to say, but I will not believer them. Uh, thank you though to, like Wade said, the county and city for cleaning up the levee and like you said, Mike, the, uh, pop-ups. I think this was my first couple of weeks where I did not have a ribbon cutting that I attended, but I did some fun stuff. Um, the other day, Megan took me on a tour of the animal shelter, and it was, it was intense. There was a lot going on over there. I was extremely impressed. I'm happy for the community to get to see the horse barn and everything else soon, but they are working really, really hard over there. And, um, I'm hoping to get my high schoolers over to volunteer. We're making that happen because my school is just right down the street, so. And then, uh, attended the vets dinner last Saturday, the stand-down, which was nice. Um, also attended on Memorial Day, the most moving and profound tribute I've ever seen, and it was just such a beautiful presentation. The caliber was, of the production felt like Hollywood, but it was right here in Yuba City. Um, and then I did go to the summer stroll and get really hot for a few hours, but it was decently attended as far as what I saw. I don't know about others what they saw, but, um, good, good time there. And then lastly, I was asked to speak at an eighth grade graduation, so that was my first request to speak, and, um, it was an honor. It was fun. So that's it.
All right, thank you. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, did attend, along with, uh, many of you, the Pluma Street. What do you, what would you reveal? Perhaps it would be more than a ribbon cutting. There was a ribbon cut, but the lights, part of the project, uh, that we talked about a meeting or so ago that still in, needs to be completed, but making great progress. Uh, obviously attended the budget workshop, looking forward to the 17th of June for more information. Attended and had the opportunity to speak at the Sutter Buttes Flood Control Agency. Uh, we kicked off the last 1.6 miles of, uh, levy, levy repair or redo down in the south portion of the county. Um, the mayor was there, Doug Lamoff, Congressman Lamoff, Assemblyman Gallagher, and, and just the history of how long it's taken to get these, uh, the levies, uh, done. So the 200-year flood protection, and this will provide the 100-year flood protection for the south part of the county. Everyone says, well, is that it? No, that's not it. Now we have the, uh, the east side of the levee of the bypass. That's the next thing we'll be tackling. Went to the SECOG. I provided you all with short notes, so I'm not going to go over that, other than to say that, uh, we did finally get, uh, formal approval for a mobility zone, uh, in its south Yuba City. Uh, I believe that might be one of the other districts. District five. Um, but I voted for it. Anyway, um, so this is an opportunity for, uh, us, we, of all the zones in the Sacramento region, and this includes six counties and all the cities within them, um, there was 23 mobility zones, uh, initially identified, and, uh, we are in the first group of 10. So thanks a lot to staff. I don't see them here. They're all with Ben, I'm sure, but nonetheless, uh, you know, that, that has a lot to say with the city staff doing their due diligence and working closely arm-in-arm with SECOG, but also our area partners. I mean, it takes a lot of different agencies to come together and, and, and pick these 10 zones. So more to come on that. It's, um, pretty much the Garden Highway area, um, up to, I believe it's Franklin, west to Sanborn, the levee, and down towards Stewart, but I'll get an exact map to go. If you don't mind, I would like to close in memory of retired Yuba City Fire Engineer, Terry Brown, who passed. Terry, um, was, uh, probably one of the guys back in the seventies, eighties, and nineties that, uh, helped bring Yuba City Fire Department, um, up from, from, I don't want to say the dark ages to the middle ages, but definitely a very professional individual, uh, and went on to, to have a private, this successful private businesses in town as well. But Terry was, uh, very instrumental in moving Yuba City Fire Department with his time with us. Thanks.
All righty, thank you. Um, it has been a whirlwind of a couple of weeks. I think I've spent more time at the city hall than I have my own office. The budget ad hoc has continued, uh, the committee has had a couple of meetings, um, continuing to research other things with our city manager on how, um, uh, we can still get business done and see what the opportunities are ahead of us with, um, with the constraints we have. We did have, uh, a meeting between the city and the county, uh, keeping up good relations there, and, uh, that was the vice mayor and myself. Numerous ribbon cuttings, most of them's been mentioned. Uh, I'll add to that Shooter's Paradise, uh, was one that I did, and then the, um, mod for Yuba Center Transit, Mr. Chair, uh, that's pretty awesome, the way that was rerouted out there. We've been working on that for several years. That is basically was supposed to be last mile transportation into the transit system, and they're starting that actually over in Yuba County, but that's been in the works for about four or five years because that started before Mr. Martin retired, so it's good to see that come about. Attended A Grateful Nation Remembers, very moving. Um, if you're familiar with what happened in Benghazi, uh, I had to go watch 13 hours again after the, the, uh, ceremony and service and stuff because, uh, Chris, whose code name was Tonto, was actually here speaking on, uh, Sunday. And, uh, it's, it's real, and we owe all them gentlemen a debt of service for what they did in saving people's lives. Vice Mayor, you did us, you did us a great job in representing the city and representing Sabufka at the groundbreaking, and, uh, very well done. And these guys don't mess around. Get there for a groundbreaking, and here's this big freaking, what is it, an excavator with a bucket. So they know how to break ground when it comes to the levy work, so good job there. 93Q interviews, uh, hit the stroll, it was too dang hot, went over to the stand-down, it was even hotter because they had no, no, uh, air conditioner in the 530. And, um, you know, just want to say thank you to our entire city team, our city manager. We've got a lot of work that we've put in over the past, uh, about six or six to eight weeks, and it's going to continue as the budget is coming forth in just a couple of weeks. Just so you know, we do have our eyes on the Yuba City High School baseball team. Do you know if they won the next level? They played it for today. Okay, we're watching them because if they do make it and win the state or whatever, we want to, we want to recognize them as well, uh, coming up. And back to Center Street, yeah, it was kind of an unveiling. We did a ribbon cutting, but as we told the DBA, when we get to the end of that journey and that park is done, uh, the city will coordinate a nice ceremony and dedication for that park, thanking all the people and pulling them together that did that. So is there anything else the council has tonight? Nope? Okay, well, with that, uh, at the request of the vice mayor, we will close tonight's meeting in honor of, uh, former Yuba City Fire Department, a member, Terry Brown. We stand adjourned.
Yubasutter.live's local government live streams are presented by Plumus Lake Self-Storage in Plumus Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske Truck Rentals. Details at plumuslakeselfstorage.com.